At this time, I'd like to call the meeting on order. The U.S. Attorney General will do the final digits. And I'm going to ask Chief Baker to lead us into questions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask Councilman Negashet to lead us in a special prayer. Councilman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a Hindu prayer that was supplied by Rajan Z. We mediate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Lead me from the unreal to the real. Lead me from the darkness to the light. Lead me from death to immortality. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world. By devotion to selfless, one attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others, always in mind. May we be protected together. May we be nourished together. May we work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening and may no obstacle arise between us. United, your resolve; united, your hearts; may your spirits be at one, that you may long together dwell in unity and concord. Peace, peace, peace be unto all.
Thank you, Councilman. Nicely done. It's hyper sexy. Okay. The -- will the clerk please call it off?
Arcanti?
Present.
Currie?
Here.
Deep Dabici?
Here.
Riley? Seaberry?
Present.
Stanley?
Here.
Taylor?
Coles?
Here.
Negashet?
President.
Ellis?
Here.
Cabo?
Here.
Sadi?
Present.
Disconti?
Present.
Torbetta?
Present.
Knapp?
Here.
Nero?
Here.
Perkins?
Present.
Janice?
Here.
Rotello?
Here.
Skazafama? Ty Schultz?
Present.
The President, three absent. Let the record reflect the following: Councilman Riley is on family business. Councilman -- I was going to make an announcement a little later, but Councilman Skazafama is ill. He was in the hospital this weekend, so we pray for his speedy recovery. Doesn't look like it's anything -- I don't want to say a mic threatening, but it looks like he's going to be okay. But he's got a little bit of a recovery period. And Councilman Taylor is also not feeling well. And we love to have a microphone just in front of him. But other than that, he is also on the mend and is currently on meditation. So we welcome him back here to July. So, Councilman Taylor, Councilman Skazafama is sick, Councilman Riley is up there. First 30 minutes of these council meetings are reserved for public speaking. If any member of the audience wishes to address the council this evening, you must do about an item specifically on the agenda, and you must be a resident and/or taxpayer of the city of Danbury. At this time, if any member of the public wishes to address the council -- Dr. Weinstein, I see you're moving, so come on up. You'll be up for company.
I don't know what the agenda is. I was hoping to show off.
Your area's on the agenda.
Okay, great. That's awful. Can everyone, Jerry?
No, you have to speak in the microphone. Just a little before, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm Laurie Weinstein, professor at WestCon, and I live at 44 Concorde Road in Danbury.
Item five. Right through here on item five. Item five on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. I'm here begging for money again, and I realize money is very short. Let me tell you what I'm asking for. I'm asking for $2,800 for the Danbury Historic Properties Commission. All of you should receive one of these items from your box. I can only be copies thanks to the chairman of Danbury. I believe they support us, so people need some more. This is a reimbursable grant that we reimburse to the federal government. The Historic Properties Commission came into being probably in 2002 after starting to compete to Mayor Ralph about that, thanks to Chris Edwards and the efforts of the staff. We now are a bona fide Historic Properties Commission. I've been before out in council many, many times before. It was a long and winding road, as Mr. Elfrin says, in terms of becoming Historic Properties Commission. And -- whoa. Stand back here. Okay, so anyway, it's been a little frustrating on my point of view of the commission because we're trying so hard.
Go ahead, Laurie. I want to ask you.
It's been a little frustrating from our commission's point of view because our purpose is to help Danbury to rivalize. We want to restore historic buildings and historic parts of buildings. We organize to restore the murals in the old library. Those murals desperately need to be refitted. We cash bids. We know how much it would cost. Knowing that this is too expensive of a job to get done at this moment, we are asking for $2,800 if there's anything left in the budget. This would be a reimbursed grant. We can give this to the federal government if we have become certified local government. It's the National Park Service. So the city of Danbury is a certified local government, and that is quite a pump for us to have. This means we comply for monies, reimbursable monies for the most part, matching grants and things of that nature to do historic preservation. This particular small chunk of money is to help planning and zoning look for archaeological sites throughout Danbury. We would like to create a map of site sensitivity in archaeological terms, where could you store sites could be located, believe it or not, even under pavement, even on hilltops and wooded areas. There are still a lot of sites. With something like this available, issues such as the reform site would not have been such a major issue because we could have gone to a map and said, hey, wait a minute, according to this predictive model. I'm going to be working at WestCon on this. One of my colleagues, Dr. Cosmo Scavallata, is an expert in GIS mapping and creating predictive models. And most of this money would be used primarily to send out flyers to people of Danbury where we think we might have hot spots in terms of archaeological sites. It's a volunteer kind of thing, so if they send back the survey to us and say, yes, we have something, yes, we found things, and yes, by all means, come and survey it, then we're going to go out and do it. My work is free, so is Dr. Scavallata. We'll be working for free. Our students helping us with this. So it's a win-win kind of thing, and it's a great tool for planning and design. And it's reimbursable. You get it all back. So thank you.
Any other members of the public which should address the council this evening? Any other members who wish to run one?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm from council on Danbury, one sub-teen, a great kind of early Danbury connect. I also can submit on item number five, as reimbursable. I'm a current federal government former, a city history major, a volunteer commissioner, a member of WestCon community that has heard about the number here, is in the fall. I think this is a great idea. Danbury does have a lot of historical sites that can be uncovered and enhanced. And if this in any way helps to preserve those, we might want to maybe also get this as a perfect idea, so especially to mention that on the back of the execution. I think we did our best.
If you have more, any other member of the public which should address the council this evening? Ms. Gardner. How will the resident sit in here?
Yes, I'm Mary Gardner, 16 cases. I'd like to address items. First one, item number 13, the parole of the second, the victim's condition was ill. We're very ready for her to move in. And since it's come downtown, it's a very exempted, which future of the city center itself, and it's pretty much a three council to go and take it down. And item number 15, transfer funds from the river housing partnership to the city center farmers market. There's a massive community collaboration underway with the integrated city center farmers market where we have over 31 pockets involved in trying to provide and create Kennedy Park as a community court of interest. Question is going to be fresh markets season. Part of that is providing dollar-to-dollar matches to a community. So those who have either state or federal benefits, we're providing dollar-for-dollar matches. This is one that will be put into the system, the dollar system, or even dollar-to-dollar matches, as well as those dollars that we use to support connect the farms that Danbury can manage to grow.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner. Appreciate it. Any other member of the place which should address the council this evening? Seeing none of that, we'll move on to our announcements for this evening. There are several, and there are several events coming up, and we do this very busy month, as we all know. So before I get to the listing of the events, there are a couple of my prior announcements that I want to make. First of all, I want to congratulate Councilman Seaberry on the birth of Annalise, a new resident of the North Pole, Alaska, and a new granddaughter. So congratulations. I want to congratulate our Judge of Provey and wife of Bob Yaman, Diane, for her 25th birthday, which we celebrated last week. I had mentioned earlier that Councilman Skazafama, Councilman Taylor were six, so I asked if you keep them in prayers. We also received word late this evening that one of the police officers, Jason Franklin, was involved in a rather serious accident in Upstate New York. We understand that she's doing good, but we want to keep her and her family in prayers as she hits the road to recovery. Just wanted to know if we could keep them with you if we could. There are a number of events. Kind of just stick through them for you as I traditionally have. One important event for those watching at home, those individuals, the Mackinac High School graduation, which is scheduled for tomorrow evening at 7:00 p.m., has been moved to St. Mary's Church in Bethlehem. That is because they have air conditioning. So if you're a proud Mackinac High parent, don't go to Mackinac High School because there's not a graduation there. Make sure you go to St. Mary's Church in Bethlehem. In the morning, the United Way, a day of caring, is breakfast, the Geller in the Amaru. And tomorrow is a Portuguese cultural center, 50th annual golf classic. June 9th is adult Danbury Adult Education Ceremony at Western Connecticut State University. If you have an opportunity, if you join me there, that is a horrifically moving experience to see individuals who have a challenge in very different ways in their lives, rise above those challenges, receive the high school diplomas, and move on hopefully to a much better world. So it's a good event to go to if you've never been to that. June 12th is the Grand Danbury Soapbox Derby right on Caster Street at 11:00 a.m. And also, the Danbury Else Lodge have their annual flag day service. That is at 2:30 at the War and Water, right, Jeff? You're right. Okay, 2:30 at the War and Water. The service lasts about a half an hour for our residents who are at home watching. On the 13th, Skip DeArtest is having a social hour of two steps. So that might be something folks might be interested in. On the 14th, the Lebanon American Club is having their annual scholarship there. It's at 6:00 p.m. at the Amaru. June 20th, Henry M. Technical Schools having their graduation. They also really something unique this year. They're going to utilize the Irish County Park as a graduation, for the graduation ceremony. It's a proud matter to have them there. June 24th is Danbury High School graduation. Another site to see where 700 graduates leave those, the Hall of Halls and DHS. There is a new time that I just mentioned to the council, to residents and friends at home. It is at 3:00 p.m. at the O'Callaghan. It's not at 5:00, at 3:00, so it's been moved up by two hours. June 25th is the Volunteer Fireworks Council Annual Fireworks Display in Canada Lake. It's at 9:30. Again, it's a tremendous event. Certainly we ask for your participation if you can. June 28th, the Major Services, the annual butterfly breakfast. On the 29th is the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament. And June 26th is our Lebanon American Day here in the city of Danbury. We're doing the flag raising at 1:00 with the recognition memorial services. And then later, we'll have a luncheon at the Lebanon American Club immediately following the flag raising and recognition ceremonies. So those are by no means not a complete list of all events that are happening in the city of Danbury, but they are certainly some that are happening. And June 28th, I'm not forgetting, is Ben and Barbara Janice's wedding anniversary and anniversaries. You want to make sure I got that right? I got you. I got you back. Okay. With that, that concludes the announcements for this evening. At this time, we'll move to our scheduled meeting and entertain the minutes, please. Your Honor, I have to turn this on. The committee good morning at this time. As we read the reading of the minutes, as all members have copies, the council are on final, which is the system charge. Second, what's with Dave's second, but Councilman Negashet, there any changes, corrections, releases of the minutes as presented? Seeing none, I'll try your minds and accept this of the minutes. All is in favor, if you see the public saying aye? Aye. And are you opposed? Harry Seven, motion carries. Mr. Jory, lead with the gathering in second calendar, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Consent calendar for June 7, 2011, as follows. Number one, receive communication to prove the appointment of William J. Totten as a member of the Ricker Park Authority with a term expired June 1st, 2014. Number two, receive the communication to prove the appointment of Greg Caskill as member of the Conservation Commission with a term to expire June 1st, 2014. Number three, receive the communication to prove the appointment of Natalie Burr as a member of the commission on 18 with a term to expire June 1st, 2014. Number four, receive the communication to prove the appointment of William J. Lewis as an alternate member of the commission of persons with disabilities with a term to end to end to expire on June 1st, 2014. Number six, receive the communication except for generous donation from the Connecticut Bass Federation Nation for a commemorative bench to be located at Canowit Town Park and sent appropriate letter of thanks. Number eight, receive the communication to prove the appropriations of $75,000 to the ambulance fund account number 500000.5338. Increased services, response have also increased revenues, which will offset the additional expenditures created surplus for the ambulance fund this fiscal year. Number 10, receive the communication to prove the request for tax collector for the listing of name and amount of uncollected taxes from 2,000 onboard vehicle list and transfer $284,149.07 to the suspended list. Number 12, receive the communication to prove the request of the city purchasing agent for the disposal of surplus vehicles and equipment. Number 15, receive the communication to prove the request of the Danbury Housing Partnership to donate $1,500 to the center's farmers market to support and promote proper nutrition and health for the lonely residents of Danbury. Number 18, receive the communication that Doctor's Lee authorized a new board of education from the superintendent of school to file a grant application with the related documents of the state Department of Education of Education to accept a grant for state reimbursement funding for the Danbury High School window replacement project and will reestablish school building bidding as required. Number 19, receive the communication that Doctor's Lee will allow the city of Danbury Public Work Department to accept funding from the State Department of Environmental Protection through the Law and Equipment Exchange Fund grant program. The award amount $20,865 to be used to purchase new equipment for the DPW. The city is responsible for 20% of the award of $4,173,000, with the other 80% to be reimbursed by the state. Number 21, receive the communication to convey some land and sidewalk easements for MDD Realt LLC 100 Federal Road Lot. Number K10072, along with the required documents and plans suggested by the Corporation of Council, planning commission, and city attorney. Number 22, receive the communication and take no action on the water extension Fairlong Avenue project 10-19. Number 23, receive the communication and take no action on Santeri Sewer Extension Shannon Ridge Road, Bourbon Avenue, Edgerton Street, object number 1019. That, sir, is the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Jory, this is now. Thank you, Your Honor. Would you make a motion to consent? Consent calendars present.
Second.
They've seconded by Mr. Perkins. Any discussion about the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll try your minds and accept. It's all is in favor, please signify to say aye? Aye. And the opposition, motion carries against it. That would mean items 1 through 4, I consent. Madam clerk, item 5, please.
Patient requests for serving as part of the commission. Members of the city council, aye or no? Aye again.
It was a pleasure. It's a pleasure, Council. Ms. Ty Schultz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to reiterate through an ad hoc consisting of a representative from the mayor's office and the director of lineers.
Ad hoc commission consisting of following: Councilman Deep Dabici, Councilman Ty Schultz, Councilman Janice. Item 6 was consent. Madam clerk, item 7.
Budget transfer. Commissioner Mark Barton, Provey, Saint Louis. Attention, the listing of budget transfers necessary for this fiscal year. I respectfully request that these transfers be added to the council's June and Jan. ever due approval. Please feel free to contact me if you require any additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. It was a pleasure, Ms. Calhoun.
Your Honor, thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication on the budget transfers and approve them as presented by David Simler, the Reverend of Danbury.
So they've seconded on Mr. Seaberry. Discussion about the transfer request. Mr. James.
Good question, Mr. David Semler.
Mr. Semler, please.
When we sat down for about a half hour, 45 minutes, we wondered a lot of these items that would be transferred to land. Unfortunately, we're not able to communicate our discussion to a lot of our council members. Can you just give a brief summary of 10, 15 minutes summary to go over through my item leaves on half time? I mean, I'm old, and my items definitely not in the original budget, so it's a deal of what's being transferred.
The question is, Mr. Semler, what do we do? Just this one. The bottom line is this. Typically, most of these transfers typically go to the mayor when he signs off on them. If they're among the, just within the department. Some of these transfers are in the division, and that's the position that it works.
System's beating back. We had to confer. Couldn't find anything.
That's the words. So the distinction on this is that removing money within the division, and that requires council approval. So rather than have two separate lists, I decided to, which leads to further confusion, sign that one list that we go for the council. And that's the overall issue here. So what we have here is a bunch of changes that typically would just go through the normal process that we have every year, then every month. But the difference, some changes at year end was very tight. We had to make some moves in between divisions. This is an incredibly tight year. Normally, we don't have to make the moves in between divisions. And that's why you have this eagerness to pass. So if you want, you know, without, I'm not going to go through every line because I think that would take a lot longer.
Why don't you give us an example of one line?
Example is the assessors' office. Within the budget, you know, they didn't have a certain position budget within the assessors' office. In fact, that was in the library. That amount, that salary is being charged back to the assessors' office. We need to make that move, which happens to be from one area of the budget into another. So that crosses divisions in the budget for gas and category. That requires council approval. That would be one of those prime examples. Another example would be some interest on that F. That requires council approval right there. And some other areas, anytime we move some money from all overall public works into, say, our state or vice versa, that would require council approval. And what we did is we looked at whatever statements we might have had, and that's why you see a lot of salary type of accounts going at time, regular salary. We looked at that and we said, where do we need some additional money as we project out to year end? Some of that was in buildings, so you see some shifting into the buildings accounts, you know, whether it was from their fuel accounts or electricity accounts into maybe the maintenance accounts. Because we saw that we have some needs, as the mayor mentioned earlier. One of the buildings does not have air conditioning, and that's become a pretty important need. And I can't remember which one it was.
Old library.
Thank you. And the old library. So, you know, we've been delaying those things over the last few years, and now it's a critical need. And so we have to make those kinds of shifts within this budget. But we couldn't stay within, you know, the categories that we typically live in. So we looked at this in one big journal entry a few days. And that's why we thought this was for the council. Instead of just separating, this is for the mayor, and this is for the council, we said we would just bring it all for the council and see how the sausage is made.
Further discussion about the transfers, Mr. Seven.
Thank you, Your Honor. Go through the chair to Mr. Semler. So for example, we look at the bottom of page one, police department regular salaries. We're transferring from that line item approximately $439,000. Of that amount, I know it's going other places, but of that amount, approximately $311,000 going to overtime salaries within the police department. Is that correct?
If you look at the personnel salaries things, traditionally, the place we look at that is kind of one line together because it's kind of offset together. Together, they're about $60,000 or $50,000 over. So that we had to make some adjustment there for about $50,000.
Eight years past, I would just say.
Well, that's what I'm getting to, is that that type of transfer the mayor wouldn't have come before us. That's why this looked at. So this list looks hugely extensive compared to previous years. Like we're doing it fast, about differently than we've done in the past. It's not necessarily the case because we said everything in common. So that very large transfer, at least on the balance sheet, would not have come before us in the past, if it was safe. If it was safe, I'm sorry. I'm not an accountant.
Provide a little more transparency.
That's excellent. Thank you very much.
Any other discussions? Seeing none, I'll try your minds of the transfers. All are prepared to signify to say aye? Aye. And the opposition? Motion carries against the item. Item 8 was consent. Madam clerk, item 9.
Communication, parking authority requests for finance. Thank you. Honorable Mark Barton, the council, and David Semler, Director of Finance. That is request from the parking authority for permission from city council to finance $75,000 for game equipment at the Patriot Garage. I respectfully request that this item be brought on the general council agenda for their consideration. Please feel free to contact me if you require any additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. It was a pleasure, Council. This is now.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc consisting of the parking, representative of the parking authority, representative of the mayor's office, director of finance, and corporation of council.
The ad hoc consists of following. Councilman Currie? Councilman Cola. Councilman Chees. Madam Clerk, item ten was consent, item eleven, please.
Communication, um, amendment of order, section eighteen dash twenty-four, refusal to accept unwrapped points.
It's a pleasure, counsel. Counselor Cole.
I'd like to refer this to a public carry, and I'm leading the whole.
See, no objection, it is so ordered. Item twelve, second seven, Madam Clerk, item thirteen, please.
Communication, uh, application for deferral assessment increase for Ball, Richard, and U.S.
It's a pleasure, counsel. Mr. Mayor Shuff.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to, uh, from this group, ad hoc, with the Corporation Council, Director of Finance, Director of Planning, and Taxes.
Ad hoc committee should consist of following: Councilman Stanley, Councilman Trembetta, and Councilman Discondi. Madam Clerk, item fourteen, please.
Communication, default assessment increase for Bell's Lane.
It's a pleasure, counsel. Did you see there?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee, uh, consisting of Corporation Council, Director of Finance, Director of Planning, and the next.
Ad hoc committee should consist of following: Councilman Trembetta, in the chair, Councilman Stanley, and Councilman Discondi. Item fifteen was consent, Madam Clerk, item sixteen, please.
Communication, except for the city road, it's Blue Mountain Trail.
It's a pleasure, counsel, Mr. Curry.
Your Honor, I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee consisting of Corporation Council, City Engineer, Planning Commission, and Director of Public Works.
I think that's just a straight referral, not an ad hoc, just to, uh, we meant straight referrals, right? All right. Do you want to refer this to Corporation Council, Director of Public Works, City Engineer, Planning, and Public Works? I think it's a second. Second?
Yeah.
It's a referral to Director of Public Works, Corporation Council, City Engineer, Planning, and Public Works. See, no objection, it's so ordered. Madam Clerk, item seventeen, please.
Request for water and sewer, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, Reynolds Road.
It's a pleasure, counsel. Mr. Stanley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to, uh, make sure to refer this to City Engineering and Planning for reports.
Motion may refer to City Engineering and Planning for report, see, no objection, it's so ordered. Item eight, you want to consent, Madam Clerk, item twenty.
Resolution, agreed for safety improvements at the intersection of Lake Avenue and Shannon Ridge Road and Ridge Road.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, it's a pleasure, counsel. Ms. Calhoun.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion to receive the communication and authorize the mayor, the manager, into the agreement for the safety improvements at the intersection of Lake Avenue and Shannon Ridge Road, Ridge Road, State Rocket, number thirty-four dash three-three-eight, and, I believe, there's a resolution?
Not the resolution. It's a second, I managed to see there, discussion under, uh, beside. Ms. Del.
Thanks, Your Honor. Through the chair to three, four, please.
Uh, Mr. Corey had a, he has a graduation event tonight, so Mr. Iarola will be joining us. Without his purpose here.
Then that'll be, uh, fine. Uh, I have a little map here, actually, for another item, and it shows fairly clearly the intersection of Shannon Ridge, which is opposite of Ridge, from the light is supposed to go, and, uh, the, uh, the old, the, the old highway of, after the four, the secret street. But we know, we're getting to a position where we're putting a couple lights fairly close to each other. Uh, we've got a couple issues like that, and then the, uh, West Worcester comes in by Main, we're not supposed to be going north by Main, we want to hit the left on West Worcester, you've got a light right at the four, across the Walgreens, you shoot across a few feet, you've got another light in that, at the on that side, then you go across, and obviously, these lights have to be timed perfectly, so you can be able to get through, like, when stuck in that box. Uh, the issue with Shannon Ridge is that people coming out of Shannon Ridge, out of Lake Avenue, can't get a left-hand shot, uh, in the morning, but. The issue that I have with the two lights is not so much blocking the box, but generally, when the traffic gets heavy, the traffic will back up through Shannon Ridge, it'll actually back up past the point that Shannon Ridge is, and, you know, there's nothing there now. But if there's a light there, the traffic does back up, it seems to be you're going to be just as stuck as you were before. So, if you time the lights so that not enough cars are able to back up with that light, in other words, I guess you have to make the red light shorter, the duration of red light shorter, because you'll be able to back up to Shannon Ridge, it seems to be that's going to have some sort of effect on, on the traffic, though. Unlike, for instance, um, West, uh, uh, Worcester Street in Main, which is a left-hand turn dedicated only to taking that left, where you can fifty-one or two back out to the elderly, so it doesn't really make a difference. We're talking about Lake Avenue, uh, going in both directions, and it seems to be, you know, whether you're coming out of Shannon, taking a left, or coming out of Ridge, taking a left, going in the opposite direction. And the Triple A Office Building, which at some point is going to be fully rented, dumping cars out at the same time. Adding the light, I know in a lot of accidents, and we need to do something with that intersection, it seems to be that, you know, carefully wishful, this could be one of those situations where it actually, it's, it's kind of, I'd just like to hear your thoughts on that.
Mr. Iarola.
I, um, I think I know what your question is, and my thoughts. Well, my thoughts are, um, let me just say this, uh, the technology with light controllers, phasing the lights, timing, is highly sophisticated, and there are models on top of models that will be run by the, uh, engineering company, that will actually look at the placement of the lights, how to control it, how to phase it. Uh, they will not only look at the immediate area they just spoke about, they'll actually look at, uh, the potential of backing up traffic on the ramps, which is very critical. It's going to be a requirement, that's going to be, uh, a requirement for us to look at by the State Department of Transportation. State Department of Transportation sees this as a great opportunity to eliminate, uh, accidents, uh, and congestion, uh, and that's the reason why they've, uh, are so willing to give us this, uh, honey. Uh, this honey is, uh, not easily obtainable, uh, and when they see a project that fits, uh, really the requirements of the grant, they jump on it, and they've done that with us. So, uh, I like to just be hopeful and not say it's not going to work before we actually put it up, uh, but I will take your comments into, uh, consideration, and, uh, know that, uh, there are several situations, not only in our city, but probably in every city that you go to, that has this proximity of traffic lights, uh, and this complicated of an intersection, and, uh, it's, it's manageable situation, you just have to make sure the engineers address all the issues. And as I said to you, once the traffic counts are done, and they model it on a computer, they'll actually run the model to see what happens, and then we'll tweak it, we'll feel.
We'll be following. Well, you know, this isn't coming out of nowhere, we've been told in the past when there's requested lights, that the light requested is much too close to an existing light. We hear this again, it's on a hill, we can't put a light on a hill, it's a hotel, or it's too close to an existing light, and now we hear that we're, you know, we're able to put these lights that close together, so this is for us, for me. For someone who's requested lights on Worcester Heights and places like that, we have been told, you can't put a light there, it's too close to an existing light, this is a little unusual for us, so, partly where the question's coming.
Yeah, well, just understand, every light placement is really a unique situation in itself, there are no two placement of traffic lights that will, uh, really duplicate themselves in theory and in application, so, uh, I, I hear what you're saying, but, uh, I think that's maybe a little way to look at it, so you don't get so frustrated.
If you guys, you know, you're going to be on top of it, you can follow yourself.
I'm so on top of it.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, further discussion. Ms. Tysholz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I live on Shannon Ridge, and this is fantastic. We have to, um, at all of the neighbors, we never come down to go out onto Lake Avenue, we go around the block and come out long press, it's virtually impossible to get out of our street, whether you're taking a right, going straight, taking a left, it doesn't, it, it's very difficult, and also, Shannon Ridge is a huge cut through into the ad hoc area, so, boy, I'm jazzed, I gotta say, thank you.
I'm going to advocate for your ward, counsel, Ms. Calhoun. Other, uh, any other discussions related to that? See, nothing, I'll try your minds, all favored, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposition, motion, uh, carries, uh, against it. Um, items twenty-one to twenty-three were consent, um, I think what we'll do is do the department reports, uh, that way the department has to go along with, uh, quick executive sessions when there's a minor ad hoc, uh, so at this time, uh, the president of department reports.
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion, we're leaving the department reports, has all members have copied? Final, final, just send persistent response.
Second. So they've seconded by, Mr. Mayor Shuff, discussion under department reports. Question under department reports. Ms. St. Leonard.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, through you, uh, to the, to the Chief of Police, and possibly Mr. Iarola, and maybe Mr. Palazzo, as well, this relates to the HVAC system, maybe Mr. Winter, and the Derek Police Department. I had some communications with, uh, different staff, people regarding this matter, and just want to know with the extremely hot weather coming up, and humid weather coming up over the next several days, where that stands with regard to the virtual installer, I believe, trying to correct the problems with the HVAC system at the Police Department, and what a tentative, my understanding is, there's no final deadline, but at least a tentative deadline may be before we would take further steps, which I won't, obviously, question legal issues on this one, open session right now.
Mr. Iarola.
We, um, the heating and venting system at the Police Department is, uh, is, is very sophisticated, it's very complicated. Um, we have been having some problems tweaking this system, uh, for, for a little bit of time, we've had a manufacturer come in and look at the chiller, we've had a number of other specialty, uh, consultants come in and look at it, there is a high-level meeting tomorrow, uh, in my office, to go over, uh, the next step. Um, although, uh, the, the Law Department and, uh, ourselves are prepared to go where we need to go, and there's a tremendous amount of, uh, leftover money that would rectify this, uh, we really feel that is something that could be done in a more, uh, uh,
Cooperative.
Cooperative spirit, uh, to, to, and, and, uh, there's a lot of different trades in law, so we want to make sure that there's a cooperative spirit. Uh, I see a couple of, uh, emails flying around, some, uh, temperature readings, let me just tell you, those temperature readings, whoever's passing those out, I have a sensor everywhere, like, computer, by computer, I can determine what the temperature is, there was no temperature in any part of the building, over seventy-three degrees. Uh, the other thing I want to mention to you is, this chiller likes hot weather, it doesn't like these warm and cold, you know, a warm, a little cold, it looks for some hot weather, so, when we actually have some hot weather, it loves to crank.
You understand it's going to shut off tomorrow because, you just brought the neighbor, he changed us, he changed the Malopio to the whole thing.
No, uh, we've been trending it, and that's what we're finding, is, it's what we call the shoulder season, which is where you're really not warm, but you have to run a chiller. During a very, very warm day, it actually works fine. Uh, but there are, uh, probably about eight people looking at the performance of this chiller on a daily basis on a computer, and, uh, we know exactly what's going on at, at any time of the day, so, and, uh.
Any follow-up, Your Honor? Um, again, with regard to timeframe, you have a, a high-level meeting with various parties tomorrow, um, is, if you don't have a timeframe, I understand that, but just from a standpoint of a timeframe, to either correct the issue, or, you know, remedies, common knowledge, there's a bond, a performance bond, I imagine, out there that.
It's a large, large retainer on Friday.
Large retainer. So we have remedies, but this has been going on for some time, I know, we always want to work in a more cooperative way, rather than attempt either litigator, pre-litigation steps, that's understandable, in terms of money, but, do we have at least an idea of a timeframe where we're going to have to go in one direction or another?
Well, yeah, let me just tell you, if we were to pull the plug today and say, let's go get a chiller, we can't go get a chiller today, it's the middle of summer, we rip that chiller out of there, and the, whose department's going to be out, any coal there for probably a month and a half tomorrow, so, it's something that we have to, we have until the fall to determine the solution, uh, pick out a chiller if we're going to replace it, or pick out a solution to fix an existing chiller, it might be a program, programming issue. So, uh, we wouldn't be ripping this chiller out in the dead of summer, that's, uh, the last thing we'd be doing, we, this would be something that would be done in the early spring or, uh, the late fall, where you're actually now looking for air conditioning. So, timeframe-wise, uh, you know, we're, we're, as the season gets hotter, the chiller's going to become offline less, and then in the fall, we'll probably get into what I call a shoulder season again, where we may have these impacts. Uh, but by the end of the fall, uh, we're going to have this thing, you know, fixed, where that chiller's out of there, we're going to have to break that chiller, and we have remedies to do that. Legally, uh, we're sitting on a ton of money, retention wise, and there's a big shirley bond, so, we're in a perfect position.
I, I just want to add that ADE is not, you know, they want to try to get this resolved, uh, and, you know, if we could put the chiller in tomorrow, and that would, they'd have a hundred percent, forever fix probability do it, um, but the fact that they are being, uh, cooperative, trying to come up with a resolution, uh, because we got a month or two to do that, to figure out any final checks, we want to get a long term agreement.
And, um, Ms. Counselor, we have done a number of, uh, trial bases on different programming aspects and different modifications to the chiller, we're pretty much at the tail end of that process now, uh, based on the manufacturer's recommendations, and that's something that we really owed a contractor, and we really owed ourselves, before we could go to a shirley company and claim that we had any.
But, you know, basically exhausting the possible solutions with the current system, and then by this, the end of the summer, a decision's going to happen.
That's correct, and we're basically making our own case by doing that.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Kenny.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Iarola, just like a comment, uh, thank you for the outstanding job that your department did.
Don't take Curry's advice.
I gotta give the better credit as you do it. On Star Road between San Penn and Federal Road, Tony, you guys did a great job on that train travel over there. The long time, the flooding problem is, uh, taken care of, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny.
Thank you, Your Honor. To, uh, to our chief, if I may ask a quick question.
Chief Baker.
If, with the, with the temperature problems that we've been having, or not having, whatever, has there been any effect on the communications, uh, the equipment wall, uh, where it was located?
No, it's got a separate certification that, that is the working one.
That one works?
That one works.
Mr. Del.
Thank you.
All right, just continuing on that same, uh, thing, through the chair, through, uh, this guy, the role, did I hear you correctly, did you say at no point is any room in the police station down above seventy-three, was that the figure?
Uh, I make a reference to an email that talked about some rooms that were over seventy-three, which I know, based on my computer program and sensors that we had, that it was up around seventy-three, from what my staff is telling me, that's correct. Right, that's, that's what I see.
Does it mean the humidity did rise, because measure humidity, correct?
Yeah, we, we've measured temperature, we've, we've measured humidity, but temperature's a direct reflection of the air.
Yeah, I got, I'm missing something, seventy-three, you want to?
What's happening, sorry?
I'm missing something, seventy-three, it's probably seventy-eight in here right now, I do.
Well, it's, it's about air movement, it's not really about temperature, it's about moving air, and, and, it's a complicated system, it's about humidity and, and things like that, so.
So we don't have anything that is ninety, ninety-two?
Well, I, I wouldn't know, because I'd have to do a, a, basically a picture of, uh, take a snapshot of, of each room at a specific time on a computer, in terms of what the temperature reading was, uh, but, we checked a couple of the rooms that we were getting some complaints on, uh, because it was a major concern.
Based on the email, based on the email?
Based on the email, it was a major concern that if those rooms were getting up to that temperature, something unique.
Really hot, you know, it's seventy.
That's correct, yeah, we get right on a computer, uh, this, this, the system that we have, uh, reports every motor that's running, every, uh, ventilation system that's running, every, uh, you know, open, closed, mover, and, all that stuff is reported on computers.
Right. Which, you have to really model the issue, but when we finish the boilers at the high school, with a very similar system, we'll be able to check the other rooms remotely all.
Just a comment, I have a question, Your Honor. Uh, just so we're clear, it doesn't seem to be belittling in, in response to Councilman , uh, Retello's comment, seventy-three is a very different seventy-three when it's very humid, when the air's not circulating, than a seventy-three in a dry temperature, circulating air. You got equipment that's wearing a uniform, so, I think. uniform, so I think you have to look at that on balance, and understand you know what you can do, and appreciate the, uh, the information regarding the timeframe, thank you.
Further, uh, discussion, we have, of course. See none, uh, last year, acceptance, all of us prepared, second department, please signify this, aye?
Aye.
The first two, not the same name, uh, the department heads were available to executive session, so I will need, uh, Mr. Sandler, and Mr. Pinter, and Mr. Shepherd, and Jim, uh, with the council's adult, and we're going to be sitting on an executive session. And, uh, anybody else, you want to...